Welcome everyone to our special meeting tonight. Those that are in attendance and those that are viewing by livestream. Tonight we have a special meeting of the state historical offices here along with our historic preservation committee. We've got two presentations that are on the agenda. The state's want to kick it off first and then our HPC will come in behind it. They will have some discussion and then we'll adjourn this meeting and get ready for the main show at the 7:00 PM mark. But before we do that, I'm going to call a meeting to order. Please everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Black Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor? Motion is approved. Agenda is approved. Commissioner Marley is running late tonight. He had some commitments in his office in Hope County and he'll be here as soon as he can. So, first presentation will be from the NC State Historic Preservation Office and Chance, do I turn it back over to you?
Thank you Mayor. Definitely want to thank you and the commissioners for agreeing to hold this public meeting. As you are aware, there have been discussions about the reinstatement of the Historic Preservation Committee to a full commission. We attended their meeting a few months ago and I gave some historical information in terms of where we are now. That led to us having the discussion here and where we are today. And so, what you'll hear from the state is some background information on historic districts in general, but I feel that it would be appropriate for the Historic Preservation Committee to present, see you guys what their plans are, what would be their vision for the historic district if granted the reinstatement, what would they like to see done, things of that nature. So, as I have helped to guide them, I think it was important for them to be able to have your audience this evening to let you know what they did have in store. And I'd like to turn it over to the state this time to start today's special meeting.
Thank you for having me. I'm Christie Brantley. I'm the Certified Local Government Coordinator for the state of North Carolina. And my colleague Julie Smith, she's the National Register and Survey Specialist and Cumberland County is in her territory. So she's going to speak to you real quick in just a couple of seconds. It was, I just realized, do you guys have a locally designated district?
Yes.
By ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. We, and it's okay, we were not, we were not aware of the locally designated district, but we're going to talk real quick and that's fine because state legislation doesn't require you to notify us. One of the maps I use, and you'll see that in a minute, is our HPO web GIS and we does, we note historic districts. So I need to get that information from you in the next couple of weeks to make sure that's noted in our file. But let me go ahead and start. Ms. Reeves just shared her presentation with me and I was just flipping through it and I think I stole some of her thunder using the Sandborne map. And she's probably going to talk more about that in her presentation, but I'm a map geek. I love maps. I like to see where things are, where they've been. So I just started the presentation with that. The first thing that I want to mention to you that's most important is there really only three primary historic designations. The first is National Historic Landmarks. That's the federal government's ballgame and we have nothing to do with that. Local has nothing to do with that. There's only about 39 NHL properties in North Carolina. I don't have them memorized, but they're there. And also whenever I hear NHL, I think of Hurricanes, that'd be my destination. There's also the National Register of Historic Places, which Hope Mills has a National Register District and that's federal government too. Julie's going to talk about that in just a minute and the state kind of ushers that through to the National Park Service and they make the ultimate decision. The third type of designation is local designation and I'm going to talk with you guys about that a little bit more later, but that's totally a local decision. That's your decision. And state legislation asks for us to have 30 days to review any reports for paying to local designation, but that's ultimately your decision. So I'm going to call Julie up for just a second to talk to you about your National Register District.
I'm going to read this up from a bit taller. Julie Smith, as my colleague Christie said, National Register and Survey Specialist based in the Raleigh office. So, this is another, yet another map. We love maps. And it's our HPO web map and this can be accessed by anyone in the general public. You can just do a search for it using any search engine, HPO web. And you can, you know, type in an address or Cumberland County or Hope Mills and zoom in. And what we're looking at here on the bottom right in the green area and that's for what we call study lists. And anything in blue is National Register. So as you can see there, there's the National Register Historic District for Hope Mills. And first before things are listed in the National Register, they are put on the state study list. And that's what the area I'm reading is. When we are initially putting this together, we thought that the former Cotton Mill Village that was study listed, it's actually not in Hope Mills jurisdiction. But anyway, so I just, that was kind of to show you like how the map would look and that sort of thing. And so here's the detailed view of the National Register Historic District designated in 1985 by the National Park Service. That's who lists all the National Register districts and individual properties. Goes through our office for a review process and then once it, we present it to our National Register Advisory Committee meetings, which are held three times a year, in February, June, and October. And then if it is approved, then it goes to our National Register Preservation Officer's desk who would sign it and send it to the park service. So all that's been done and it was listed in 85. And Christie and I drove around the district today just to kind of see what's changed from then to now and, I don't know if there's anything else in there to say? Anybody?
Does anyone have any questions about just the National Register District and what that means? That was a tool that the federal government uses to review properties if there's some kind of federal undertaking. I think you guys have had a Section 106, environmental review.
What I would like, not necessarily Section 106, could you provide insight on the authorities that are granted within this district for a National Register Historic District? Because that's what we do have by ordinance.
Okay, so National Register, as the district expands, as a National Register District, there is no authority. I do have a question for you. The local district, does it follow the same outline as the National Register District?
I think that's what we need to clarification because I do think the only thing we have is this National Register. We did adopt that, but I'm not sure if we have the local district where we have buildings inside of it that have been registered.
So I'm very unclear, and it sounds like we all are a little bit, about your district. A National Register Historic District, there is no regulation. I'm going to talk to you, let me go through across the presentation and maybe that will help us figure this all out. So talk a little bit about the federal government. Under the National Historic Preservation Act of 1960, it established the National Register Historic Places, it established our state office and Section 106. Later in 1980, it came back and realized the local government was not a part of that. So that's when Certified Local Government came about and I'll speak to that in just a minute. Separate from that, but holding hands with it is our North Carolina state legislation. And very small, I can't read it from here, but at the top you can see the general statutes that relate to North Carolina's Historic Preservation Commission and their designation. So why do we have local commissions? So our legislators believed, and this is in Statute 160D 940, that it's one of, that heritage districts are one of our most valued and important assets and that the conservation and preservation of these districts and landmarks stabilize and increase property values and strengthen the overall economy of the entire state. And that goes through by Historic Preservation Commission listing the district of properties and then regulating it. They also are giving the option of acquiring property, but that's not necessary. Most commissions don't do that. We can talk about that a little more if you have questions. But it's all done in the form of zoning. So there's over 100 preservation commissions in North Carolina. Last time I counted, it was 106. The blue notations are regular historic preservation commissions on that map and the green are Certified Local Governments. And there's about 54 of them are Certified Local Governments. And as the commission has already seen this, so North Carolina legislation requires you to have at least three members to be in a preservation commission, but the state in North Carolina requires you to have five of your certified local government. So we always encourage commissions to have at least five members initially. And this just speaks of some of the requirements. The majority must have a demonstrated special interest or experience and they must reside within the planning jurisdiction. Does Hope Mills have an ETJ?
No, we don't.
That helps.
We have a municipal influence area, but we don't have an ETJ.
So 160D 942, and I am not going to read this to you so y'all will panic. These are all the powers that the state of North Carolina has given the Historic Preservation Commission that they may have. Right. I have, we have broken them down into three groups and I'm going to go through them with you really quick. Identify and designate, regulate, and then advocate and educate. So the first thing is for a commission to identify their historic properties. They should have an inventory of what is of historic importance to Hope Mills. And I believe they've already done that. Then they recommend to the governing board what to designate. And we'll talk about that more. Sometimes I get really fast when I'm speaking to the public, so y'all may need to slow down. Y'all, thank you. So what, what do we preserve and what do we protect? And this is outlined in state legislation. So the district or individual property must be of special significance and it must possess integrity. Okay? And those are the characteristics or the types of integrity or the types of special significance that can. Now this one is a, because it does get complicated. This is the basic local landmark designation process and I believe you all were given probably this. This is only for individually locally landmarked properties. However, until the very end, district designation follows the same, the same workflow. The one thing I want to point out, at the very end, I think it might be the bottom right square, it says a 50% tax department. That does not count for districts. That's only for individually locally designated properties. So if you, do you have in your ordinance, the ability in your formal ordinance to designate individual landmarks? I believe we did. I'll have to pull it up and what.
And I will say that based on the initial request to reinstate, it is tied to the powers authorized under the 160D new section of the general statute. So if the board does so choose to move forward, I think those powers would be included. I also have a question too. Back to when you were talking about the Historic Preservation Commission and the three members and things of that nature. When it says much reside within planning and development jurisdiction, are you referring to the town Hope Mills limits? Are you talking about they must reside within the historical boundary?
Just within the planning jurisdiction of Hope Mills.
No, the town limits. That's what I'm saying.
This pretty much goes through the whole process for you and what would need to be done to designate. I'm not sure where we are with that because you had sent in a report in 2019, but from my understanding, you had already been designated before the report was sent in. So it needs to follow state legislation, it would need to go through this process. And you're going to need an magnifying glass, I'm just going to give you a heads up. But all this state legislation is referred to in that landmark. What's the difference between local and National Register Districts? So, and one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up especially, and this was before I realized you had a local district, but Julie and I rode around and there was a lot of infill, there was a lot of new construction in that traditional National Register District. So you guys may want to look at revamping your district. Again, as Julie said, it's a, the National Register is a federal program. There's, you can be listed, your house can be listed in the National Register today and tomorrow you can carry it down and that's, there's no, there's nobody regulating that unless you've gotten tax credits. So some properties in the National Register District are eligible for historic rehabilitation tax credits. Or if you've gotten a grant because your property's in the National Register. So National Register, there's no authority. Local designation, before any changes are made to the exterior of the property, a certificate of appropriateness has to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission or if it's a minor, considered a minor works by the town staff. Does the commission have design standards?
What we ultimately did when it was formerly operating as a commission, we adopted the guidelines offered by the state, the generic guidelines.
The Secretary of Interior.
Yes.
Standards for Rehabilitation. And that's not uncommon.
So we were, we were advised to adopt those until we actually had the funds and time to have a official report done to establish official guidelines. So they have a staff bestowed.
Okay, fantastic. Because they, and we have, they have rules, they'll need rules of procedure.
We have rules of procedure, they have, all of that's in place. And so what ultimately happens is those won't change. The only thing that has changed is their designation as a commission.
Okay. And that they're authority to regulate the property.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on the difference between a local district and a National Register District? Often across the state they overlap and it sounds like they fail.
I think that's where we need more of a clarification because there is a frame of mind that we have the National Register and then there's a frame of mind that we have the local. I do think, and I think, I think we have the National Register.
Right. Unless you're, yes, and I didn't realize that there was a local district, but a local district, we would have gotten a report, reviewed it, have 30 days to review it. Since you are non binding comments, you don't have to, I mean, you can, it's your deal. It's a local government's decision, but we just offer our comments and our help as best we can. And then you would designate the district as a local historic district by ordinance.
Okay, then we have done that. I do know that, and I think when Mrs. Reeves stands up, I do know that there was a report sent in and I do know that you guys did review it. And I do know that our ordinance designates by authority the powers of the, the original ordinance that we had designated, the power and authority of the commission, the terms, the certificates of appropriateness and things of that nature. It's that ordinance that hasn't changed. I think 160D has been updated since then, but I do think all of the other things are in place except the designation as the commission to be able to exercise those authorities because right now they're just a committee.
So if you can send me that ordinance when you get a chance, no rush on that. I would encourage you to look back over the district. If it follows the complete, exact footprint of this National Register District, there are several properties that are no longer, no longer within that district that are, that are standing.
We have done the update per se. There's been a lot of changes, as you say, things that were there that are out there in the, okay? But we have that on a working Google Doc.
On Google.
With cipher access and things like that because it seems like it's constant update. So yes, we have that in hand anytime we want it on a Google Doc.
And you may want to consider amending the district because you, if you're reinstated, you will have, you will regulate properties in that footprint if that's a footprint y'all have for your local district. Does that make sense?
You're saying, I guess if there are properties that no longer exist, those boundaries may have to be updated just to make sure that you're not granting authority over properties that no longer are considered to be historic?
Right. Now, if that's your decision, I think it would be simpler for you, for you and for the commission to look at that again and just make sure. Let me move on real quick. We talked about regulation. Once a property is designated or district is designated, following the design guidelines or design standards, the Historic Preservation Commission regulates the exterior of that property. And they would have, the property owner would have to have a certificate of appropriateness before any exterior work is done. Some of that's minor works, they can just go through you. Some of it's major.
Let me, let me ask you a clarification with that. If we're talking about minor works, are you saying that that, those are works that do not have to go through the zoning department to get the full certificate of appropriateness?
They would have to all go through the zoning department, but the minor, many minor works are the, under the planning department. So if they needed to change a gutter, well, you need to be careful with windows, the historic windows.
The window that's broken.
If the window was broken and you were just replacing the glass, you wouldn't want to have them go all the way through the Historic Preservation.
That's kind of where I was leaning. Would this reinstatement and ordinance update have to outline the difference between minor and major works?
It doesn't have to be in the ordinance, but it would need to be in your design standard.
Okay.
That is my understanding. Because everything would need to have a certificate of appropriateness, anything erected, altered, restored, moved, or even demolished. And if you all are using the Secretary of Standards for your design standards, that's great and that's good, but you need to eventually come up with something more specific to the special significance of Hope Mills.
That, what we did about those, that, those were the actual specific directives. This is kind of like a placeholder to get some things in place, but we would need to have gone a little deeper to develop guidelines that are unique to the Mill Village for Hope Mills.
The Hope Mills is very different than Spring Hill, which is newer on from. So it's all, it's very unique.
Ma'am, I have a question.
Uh huh.
Okay. Now, the more we go into this, the more confused I'm getting, but I'm trying to keep together.
That's okay. It is.
So I'm going to throw an example out there and I guess you can tell me, so Trade Street. Do you know that area?
Will you guys say it? Yes.
Okay. Now that's privately owned, even though it's in the historic district. Now, the current owner of the property doesn't care about the upkeep of the building. What, what can we do for that kind of?
If it is a locally, if it's part of the local historic district, do you have code enforcement?
Yes, we do.
But this is, the local historic district is a, it's a overlay and it's a form of zoning. And so you can, you would do the code enforcement to make sure that that property owner followed what is in the design standard. Does that kind of make sense?
I guess, but, so if code enforcement, say electrical, all right, there, there, all the buildings have electrical issues because it's the 1900s, whatever, and they refuse to do it. I mean, ultimately, we just have code enforcement give them fines kind of thing?
Well, however it's set up in.
Let me ask you a clarif, a clarifying question as well. In the event that a lot of these improvements are interior based on plumbing and electrical structural things, would you agree that the authority of code enforcement would be to enforce the established guidelines that have been adopted by the commission, but only for exterior work, not interior work?
Correct. You are only, the Historic Preservation Commission can only regulate exterior unless, there's always an unless, I'm sorry y'all, unless the property owner has agreed to, for you, for the commission to regulate specific interior features, say they have a great mantle, a great staircase, awesome ceilings, those things would have to be in the designation ordinance for that particular property. But you are correct, the Historic Preservation Commission can only regulate exterior.
And I want to make sure I clarify, only the exterior that are in violation of their adopted guidelines. Or is it just, I want to make sure we know what we can and can't do from a window standpoint, from a facade standpoint on the exterior. I know we have the generic guidelines, but would it be over us to go ahead and get those more specific guidelines? Because that's the authority that's above and beyond what's there now that code enforcement would have.
And that we protect the witness, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the other piece of that is, and you all know this, I'm reaching for the bar right now, but the Historic Preservation Commission would be a quasi judicial board.
Yes.
So they're going to need those design standards because they're going to need to make decisions based on those design standards. Yes.
I have a follow-up question. Okay. So ultimately, all right, say there, it's interior issued, plumbing, electrical, whatever. And say the owner decides to not do anything or sell it and tear it down. Is there anything that can be done as far as HPC can do or?
If, if they decide to tear it down, they would have to ask for a placere certificate of appropriateness and the Historic Preservation Commission could delay demolition for up to 365 days. The purpose of that is for them to work with the property owner to try to come to other solutions.
If there is no solution, yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah, unfortunately. But now the other zoning issue, I don't know if that could follow, like the interior could follow. The other thing I want to point out, which makes this so much more confusing, but you are also a National Register District. So if that property is considered contributing and there's other things, Julie? So if that property is considered contributing and there's other things that Julie can answer better, there's the potential for historic rehabilitation tax credits. Cumberland County, do you know if it's a, under the Department of Commerce, is a tier three or tier two?
A tier one.
Tier one, probably, really. Okay, so the historic tax credit, rehabilitation tax credits for the state has one and that's twenty percent. So, I mean, which helps if you have to have some major repairs to your property. If it's commercial and say it's owned by someone else, but they rent it out, that's commercial. It can be up to forty percent. And that's huge. And that's been a huge asset to a lot of economic development across the state.
And if I'm hearing you correctly, that could be a tool the commission and the town could use to entice people to make these improvements because they would have the authority to apply for those tax credits.
Yes. And Jeff Adolphson, he's our restoration specialist. Have you met Jeff?
He came down every time.
Jeff is the person that would be able to answer most of the questions about that, but he helps the tax credit in Cumberland County. So he would be able to do that. I think we've talked about that. I don't know, you know, you have to follow the law of the meeting laws, just like.
Yeah.
Sure.
One thing I would like to clarify.
Okay.
Can I maybe, maybe a little, maybe a point about this? When you say quasi judicial, that kind of scares me. And they think, oh my God, they're like, you know, they're, they're. They're able to make these really huge decisions. But they are within limited time. And so can you clarify exactly for the people? What would the, I mean, what would the limitation of our quasi judicial status? Um, that is.
Okay, I'll get down to my next slide.
Okay.
So quasi judicial is similar to, you're perfect, I go on, I go on. It's similar to a court decision and the general law is applied to particular, I'm not going to read that to you, but it's based on evidence and standards or whatever the team, it's your design standard. You have, you know, you can't talk about it amongst yourselves without being in, you know, the right, the meeting law. You have to follow those standards to make your decision. And that's what quasi judicial.
And I can chime in too. There is a difference between the way we govern our regular Board of Commission and the Board of Adjustment meetings. The Board of Adjustment is quasi judicial. So it's not necessarily, when we say quasi judicial, it's not giving you extra powers as a commission. It governs how you actually conduct the meeting. And so a quasi judicial meeting is almost like going to court. You have to have standing to speak. And what she's talking about, you can't have conversations outside. That's considered ex parte. So the decisions that you make have to be based on testimony provided after meeting and during the meeting. So those are the quasi judicial rules. The best, the best example of that is our Board of Adjustment. When they're doing variances and special needs departments, but it's really different how you govern the meeting versus ours regular seven o'clock board meeting.
I'm going to start taking you with me because that was great. Um, yeah, absolutely, one hundred percent. So the School of Government offers quasi judicial training. This is the book. I actually had it with me. If you get a chance to read this, and it's very short. It was done by Adam Lowely and David Owens with the School of Government. It was done prior to the one sixty D update. So some of the legislation references may not be exactly what they are now since that update, but it's still relevant and it would be very helpful. But yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't give the commission extra, extra rights or extra oversight. Yeah.
To override any sort of.
Correct. Granted, just make sure that their decisions are based on evidence and fact and not, oh, that's pretty, let's, let's allow that happen. Oh, I don't like that color. I don't like that way that looks. Let's not let that happen. So it's a decision. And then finally, the powers allow the commission to advocate and educate. And we strongly, strongly encourage that education to the community. Because, you know, it's confusing. Historic preservation can be confusing. There's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of people who are like, oh, you're telling us what to do with our property. And if, if people understand that in the long run, it actually helps their property and your, and your town. I, I think it would be a whole lot easier on the commission and the town in general. These are just, so our office, back to the certified local government piece, once a commission has been established for a good year and regulating and working under that state legislation, they can apply for certified local government status. We review it and work with you for that application and we would review it. And then we would forward it to the National Park Service if we felt the commission were eligible. The National Park Service, we ultimately decide. One of the main benefits to being a certified local government is it opens you up for more grants. I know the Park Service just released an underrepresented community grant and you would need to be a certified local government for that. Our office each, excuse me, our office receives historic preservation funds. And that's not tax dollars, dollars, that's out of continental shelf gas and other reasons. So all state historic preservation offices and tribal historic preservation offices receive some of that funding. And ten percent of what we receive go back into the certified local governments. Any questions about that part? And certified local governments in North Carolina are required to do a certain amount of training. So our office offers that training and we also have other training out there that they can use for, to meet their requirements. The training that we offer though is not, it's for the certified local governments to meet their requirements, but we invite all historic preservation commissions and we would encourage you guys to come. And here's some resources.
Ma'am, I have another question. So do they have to be a commission in order to be certified local government? Okay, so they can't do it as a committee?
No, ma'am. And they have to be regulating, unless you want to call your commission a committee, but they would have to have that state legislation authority found in one sixty D, one forty-two. Any, any other?
Not really.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. So this is some resources. There's also a preservation list, sir. I know you have the planning list, sir. There may be a board of commissioners or a town council list, sir. I'm not sure. Do you have a chance?
I just usually contact Adam.
For the planning one, we get lots of emails every day on that. The preservation commission list, sir, you are all welcome to join. But it's Historic Preservation Commission and people who are interested in historic preservation across the state is very helpful.
And I will say that Mrs. Brantley has provided us with lists and trainings and things of that nature. So she's been very helpful and guided us throughout this process.
And you'll find that link, we, sure we put the presentation together, we did this, that link.
Those are very, very good.
On that page, I'd have to look at it exactly what page that, that we, our list is for you. And of course, the email too, everyone I believe is going to be able to go to that for me.
If there are no questions for me, I'm going to hang around. Julie and I listen to you guys.
Okay.
But at any time, our job is to help you, the town. So at any time, if we reach out to you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a business card?
I do.
I'm not really, really good at research, but I absolutely can follow both computers. All right, what we put together here is, I'm not going to read everything. It's kind of lengthy. You know, and Theresa and I get together with her, there's nothing else, but. So what we have done is we have gone through, looking through all these, looking through all documents, looking through resources. And we've identified several buildings that would meet landmark criteria or are great contributing factors to the historic district here. And the purpose of our committee is to, as Chris said, we are here to preserve historic structures in the area, to educate citizens on the local history of Hope Mills and to continue to research and delve into the historical value in history of Hope Mills slightly. Some of our current plans and projects are, we are always updating the current Hope Mills Historic District inventory. As I said, it's located on a Google Doc and we'll be more than happy to provide the date with a link to that. We want to think about pursuing national landmark designation for the Thomas Campbell Oakman Chapel. We want to establish an interactive walking trail. And I've talked a little bit with Lamarcus Morrison, our Director of Parks and Recreation, about doing that with like a cue code and it would give you information about different things that you're seeing. I also helped collaborate with him on the storyboards and the history of things like the dam gates, the, about just different aspects of that heritage park and things that they found. We will work with and collaborate with owners of the historic properties within the district. Mr. Roy Young, who's on our committee, he is an actual historic property owner. We also, I spoke with Dr. Rayner, who owns the Professional Eye Care, which is a historic building. He's very interested in it. He could not come tonight. He works Mondays at a late night. But yes, we would work with those individuals that actually own buildings. And then of course, to research requirements and work towards the commission's status slightly. There's the Thomas Campbell Oakman Chapel. I think y'all are familiar with that, the history behind it. And that would be probably the first building that we would seek a national landmark designation for slightly. Another, there's Dr. Rayner's office. That is the actual cornerstone. It came from the original mill number one. And Dr. Rayner had it put on the building slightly. I'm going to go quickly. And there you go, the plaque where the old Rockfish Meven yarn mill gave the building to the town of Hope Mills. It was the original town hall and police station slightly. Also, we have the, what's called the Eddie D's Building, but it was originally the first bank of Hope Mills, built in nineteen sixty-six slightly. You'll notice this is the Gardner Law Firm. Now, this was the old manufacturing, financial and business office for the mill. And believe it or not, I talked with Mr. Gardner or Theresa did, found out the original safe is still on the premises of that building slightly. Roy told us. Roy knew, Roy knew the locks of them. Here on Trade Street, here's a historical building that we've identified. This is the Alice Gilbert Building. It was constructed in nineteen oh eight. One of the first buildings that was used by the mills slightly. The, what you know is the Hair Salon on Trade. Originally, that was the first post office of Hope Mills, built in nineteen oh eight. And it was used until nineteen fifty-one. And in a moment, you'll see where the second post office was for Hope Mills slightly. The Lock and Key Building, which Mr. Young, do you rent that or own that, Roy? That he rents this building. This was the the general store. Thank you. Couldn't read that that quick slightly. Marcy's Cakes and Bakes was actually a furniture store for the Mill Village. Chloe's, which is a little boutique, that was a furnishings store, not to be confused with a furniture. They carried linens, oil lamps, silverware, anything you'd need to make a home. Also through the mill, south through the mill. The old Lebanon Masonic Lodge, that's where it stood until nineteen fifty-one. It also has one of the geodectic survey markers on it. There's only about two thousand of those markers left in the country. It was used to make maps, survey maps. Surveyors used them for laid of land. It's an interesting thing that we have here in the town slightly. And so all of this was from buildings who came out of the original settlement of Hope Mills. And Hope Mills is actually not the name of the town. We know that. It's a little rockfish village. But that was some of the buildings in the original district, the original buildings. And there is the, it used to be the handle, well, actually, first of all, it was the Eagle Funeral Home, correct? And it was also the little marked off area was the first doctor's office, Dr. Gilbert, his daughter was Alice. Who, you noticed the Alice Gilbert Building on Trade Street. That little area was his doctor's office. That is owned by Roy Young and he is in the current state rehabilitating now. Picture please. It's just, yeah, it's just another, talking about it, yeah. And that there is the second post office in Hope Mills. And here's where Mr. Young is renovating the post office building, the interior and those that's the exact way that my bathroom looks in my house with those huge red pine things. That must have been a characteristic. I've really got to study more characteristics of the buildings here. But that is original, is it not, Roy? As well as the trust? He just had to put more new supports in there, but that is what he's been doing, been doing so far with that post office building slightly. Here's our historic district overlay. As if, he's listed in the town. And it is Heritage Park, which is right now, phase one is under construction. We use it, utilizing the old flume, the old dam gate. And we hope to have, I believe, Mr. Morrison said sometime in the early fall, to have that phase one completed. All right, slightly. The boundary map of the district you have included in your pocket. The old sandborne map. And if you want to blow that up, it actually does tell you what those buildings were. It has the old posts for markings because they went to the four-digit system back in the eighties. But that is from the original address and postal system nineteen forty, no, nineteen fourteen, excuse me. So we are here and we are willing and want to educate our citizens on the history of Hope Mills. I get a lot, I've got a little Hope Mills Historic Committee web, Facebook page. And I get all kinds of questions and comments. People that just move into town. They want to find out more about the history of the town. Even citizens that have been here a while that want to contribute to the town or have questions about their own properties and things. So we are here to help educate and guide the public. So we are here to help educate and guide the public and to preserve our historic structures, likely. Here are the helpful links. This is, um, where you can get your certified local government information, the link to the state historic preservation office. And if you'd like to further explore the sandborne map from the Library of Congress, those are all vital links. And that is concluding, there's some old photographs from town. There's the interior of the chapel, our gazebo, things we know from, we know about. Some of the things we do, we do the festival of lights, we do the luminaries, we decorate the exterior of the chapel and the interior of the chapel. We participate in carpentry, a lot of our community activity, likely. And if anyone is interested in joining, we certainly would love to have you. And that's the end of our presentation, thank you. Any questions for me?
Questions for the board?
It was very interesting to pick up a little information that we didn't already know or I didn't already know that was going on in the chapel. Now I'm looking forward to taking some of this information and moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Lake, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lake, Commissioner Shaw.
Now, when, when you guys were the commission before.
Yes, ma'am.
Was any of the people on board currently in, uh, who are on the committee?
I was on the committee, but I came in late. I did not start on the commission or historic preservation until either February or March of two thousand and nineteen. So I was only there maybe seven or eight months.
Then you may not be able to answer this question, but I'll ask it anyways, too. Um, cause again, I'll bring up Trade Street because of the issues that we have with it. Do you know if they sought out the owner of Trade Street to try to get any of that record fund at that time?
I do not know. I would have to go through, you know, I've got, I've got, that's a whole bunch of notebooks. But I've got a lot of, of emails and correspondence with things and with the Thomas Campbell Oakman heirs. I mean, I could certainly look through that notebook of correspondence and see if there's any specific correspondence with the owners of Trade Street. I do know I had Denise Gaskin as one of our previous owners to look up the deed chip and whatnot. Um, the family that owns it, the lady is older, she's kind of signed it over to her children. And I think that that's a matter with the, you know how you go ahead and sign property over before you sweat? And, um, so, but she reserves lifetime rights to it. So it's a whole legal thing right there as far as the ownership. But, and, and I believe, Roy, you've had some contact with her. If you'd like to tell him, answer any questions you have or?
Ms. Johnson is in a nursing home, their son. Ms. Johnson is put in a nursing home, I think her son's taken over. He was in it the other day, the, uh, roof is still in on that one building. He's looking to have somebody to put the roof on it. He's here to get that building backed up and then the city's gonna start working its way down Trade Street.
Okay.
But my thing is, is if you look at the city of Favela, I'm a retired fire captain from the city. Um, the city of Favela did not wait for the owners of those businesses to move forward with Hay Street. The city of Favela would have done that, Hay Street would still be nothing but a bunch of strip clubs. But if you, if that city of Favela moved forward, it fixed up Hay, Trade Street, they did the street. They put streetlights in, they fixed up their street, they made the restored district what it is now and look what the city of Favela is. It has nothing to do with the business owners, cause once the city stepped forward, they fixed up the street, put up the streetlights and did the street the way they did it, then the business owners said, hey, the town's gonna own this, we're gonna own this. And that's what they did. And look at Hay Street where it is today. So with our historic district, if you go to Selma, you go to Red Springs, you go to these other business districts, the towns are starting to take history, interest in their business districts, they're starting to unify them. Look at Clinton, go to these areas where there are historic buildings, the town has turned them around and now the business owners are saying, hey, we wanna do the same thing. And that's why I bought the buildings I did, because I wanna preserve them, I care about the history. Whether, whether anything's been there or not, I still wanna fix mine up.
To play devil's advocate though, okay, say, say we were to fix up the street. Just to play devil's advocate, this is not gonna say it's gonna happen. We fix up the street, whatever, and then they tear down the building. What do we do then?
Well, you could prevent, you could prevent that.
That's only after they become a commission. If they're, say.
That's easy to prevent. I mean, I, I was one of the ones, um, I'm trying to prevent that myself. I actually put in an offer to buy that section of the street at two hundred and sixty thousand. They turned it down. No, I'm sorry, six hundred and sixty thousand, cause they were trying to sell it at nine fifty, now they bumped it up. But now the son's stepping in, he's looking to try to do something without, I talked to him. And what he's trying to do is actually seems to be positive.
So he's looking.
Well, I see that he is looking to try to do something with it and fix it. So I talked into him, I, I said he's gonna do something with it.
And having a historic district in there, of course, there's the C and D factor, to help that owner of that property.
So I'll, I'll say if somebody talks to him about it, then he'll see where he's going to get it.
Roy, we're sharing. Now, if you're not a commission, did he say anything about changing the roof? That they're gonna replace to something different?
All the roofs on there are flat roofs. There's nothing really in the, even in the commission, there's nothing really you can change, it's just a flat roof.
Yeah.
They're flat tin, they're flat tar, all the roofs on there are flat, signed to the back. I mean, there's nothing really.
Wanted to go in there and change that, that being a commission, we don't have any authority.
Anything in a commission you can change is gonna do anything with that, um.
I, I will add that even if it was a commission with the generic guidelines that they have in place, I don't think it does speak to unique characters of Hope Mills, old mill days in terms of roofs. But what I did here, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding, if that guy is now at the table talking about doing renovations, he can apply those tax credits now, correct? He would not have to wait until, um, the committee is reinstated. I think that is a marketing tool that you can offer him. If he's willing to do those improvements, he can actually obtain those. I think Krista wants to say something.
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that there's a mission before he changes or it happens to the, uh, senior avenue to be approved and if we need to retain it since it's still integrity, so that we'll have a frame of look, you know, of, 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 of.
Right now, the only thing he really needs to replace is the section in the back that's rotted out that he needed to prepare. The front's gonna tap, it's just that back right corner that's got to replace and then the front.
The windows are broken.
The ones in the front were.
And Mr. wore it correctly, I think what he's saying is, what's happening in that building is that you're sometimes losing businesses because of the guys doing, we've been begging them to do. So I don't wanna make, paint the picture that he's gonna do anything that drastically changes historic character. I think he's trying to save the buildings because some of these issues are so bad, it's something needs to be done. So I think where we can find that balance of enticing him to make the improvements, make sure you kind of stay within the guidelines, entice him with the tax credits, I think that's a good combination of things.
He owns, I believe he owns another company in Brooklyn, he's came in and he is now stepping in, seeing some stuff that's going on and he was not very pleased with some stuff he's seen and he's starting to step forward.
Thank you very much, Roy.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So with the Main Street program, is that something completely different? So if we have like, uh, boy, boy owns half of one side of the street, could we start with one side of the street? Cause I know we have to have a property owners on board if we do something like the Main Street.
I think, I think the Main Street program is an amazing attempt from the town side at putting some skin in the game in terms of a major investment because that is an entirely very complex program and revitalization. And so I do think that that would tell like, um, what she said about, uh, a message to the, uh, property owners in the area. I do think what you're saying, uh, Mayor Lieutenant McCray, having all the business owners on board, because I would hate to get the Main Street designation and we only have one side. I do think if we were to talk to everyone collectively, I know that at times when I was the liaison to the commission, uh, we spoke about maybe reinstating the merchants association down there. That's one way of getting the business owners in the area, uh, of the speed and on board with it. And I do think a combination of all these different things may be the injection that that area needs.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'll, I wanna tell you, a good classic observation with Trade Street is looking at an example that's going on right now in municipality that's just a little north of us in Spring Lake. Mayor Kia Anthony is working diligently with all the local business owners on Main Street in Spring Lake. And they're all privately unbilled it, but it's a partnership. That's what the strength of that is. It's, it's coming to the table to say, look, we want to preserve historic buildings. Take ownership off the table and look at partnering of how to save the history of the buildings. I'm glad to hear that the son now is finally approachable and it, and it looks like he wants to do something with it, store part on Trade Street. But I think you have to do both sides or at least approach it in both sides to save Trade Street. Can it be done? Absolutely it can be done. But if you don't have a table of collaboration like Spring Lake is doing, then the buildings are gonna just continue to deteriorate and history will, will eventually be lost through time. So I just kinda wanted to share that as a living example of what's going on in Spring Lake. It can happen right here if we wanted to and I hope that we do. Thank you, Sharon, you got anything else? Is that it?
I don't, if no one has any questions or, or anything else, I would just like to say thank you to Julie and Ms. Smith and Ms. Brantley for coming down and looking around today and for shedding some light on this. I really, really appreciate that. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for allowing us to have this opportunity to, to speak with you and Mr. McGoughlin for helping to arrange it. I'd like to thank my committee because, um, they really are supportive and helpful and we've got a great committee. So thank you and have a nice evening.
You have an excellent committee, you do, you truly do. Ashley, can we make sure that both of these presentations are put on the, our town website?
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot of work in both of them, a lot. And they, they really bookend each other when you look at the amount of information that's put in there. And I appreciate the work out of both presentations. Before we adjourn, I wanna ask the board something, now that we've gone through both presentations. Would the board like to revisit discussion and consideration to start the reinstatement process of the Hope Mills Historic Preservation Committee back to a commission? We could either do it here or we can move it to new business under our official town, a board meeting. We can move it there under new business, I'm just looking for, about to move it under new business, item G, for our regular meeting.
So.
Do I have a motion?
I made the motion.
Motion, do I have second? Okay.
I made the motion. I said so.
Call in favor? Say none opposed, item, this will reappear under item G. Thank you, Board, we'll adjourn for about twenty minutes and then, uh, we'll get ready for the regular board meeting. And we thank everyone for coming.